It's after nine now, so Jerry, let's go ahead and get the meeting started. I didn't realize it was either. We were talking and then all of a sudden I realized, oh, it's 9:01. So we'll call the meeting to order. Sorry about that. For those who are in the audience, just so you know that there's an agenda on the back bookshelf if you'd like to get one if you haven't received one for today. Jerry, looks like everyone here except for Bill at this point in time, so we know that he might be here a little bit late, but just in case. And to take that on the roll. Approval of February 26 minutes. Did everybody get a chance to review those? And is there any corrections or edits to those minutes? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
It's moved.
It's moved and seconded by Lori. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Approval of today's agenda. Is there anything wrong with today's agenda? Do we want to move anything at this point in time? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move approval.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, consent agenda. PJ.
Good morning.
Good morning. PJ Conover, Director, Planning Department. Consent agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from consent agenda by one planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make final decisions. Item three, conditional use permit 1218 for Paul and Dawn Marso to review a vacation home rental in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit 1218 to the April 9, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item four, conditional use permit review 1704 for Zane Volmer to review a single wide mobile home to be used as a single-family residence on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to end conditional use permit 1704 with the applicant's concurrence. Item five, conditional use permit review 1705 for Delmar and Melissa Nelson to review a vacation home rental on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1705 with 16 conditions. Item six, conditional use permit review 1706 for CLSD LLC Rosenbaum Signs Agent as the agent to review two internally illuminated signs located on existing sign structures within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district or dwelling unit in the highway service district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1706 with six conditions. Item seven, construction permit review for road construction CP 1708 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Summer Creek Road District, to review the installation of a culvert and water line on the north end of the Summer Creek Drive to improve portions of Ciskin Loop and Carbon Loop and grade and maintain other existing roads within the district. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1508. Number eight, construction permit review for Summer Creek Inn CP 1509 for Dan and Nancy Evangelisto, Summer Creek Inn, to review grading and leveling an area of a hillside for lots 10, 11, 12, 13, and 15 in order to construct a bill for the construction of building on lots 10 and 12, to stockpile material on other lots, which would be lot 27, between lots 34 and 35 on the property, and to level and grade an area for an overflow parking on lot 45. Staff recommends to end construction permit 1509. Item nine, layout plat 1738 for Dorothy Johnson Estates. Great Western Bank is the personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates to create lots A, B, C, and D of Johnson Estates subdivision. Staff recommends to continue layout plat 1738 to the April 23, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item 10, rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 for Dorothy Johnson Estates. Great Western Bank, personal representative for Dorothy Johnson Estates, to rezone 21.39 acres from limited agriculture district to suburban residential district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from PUD-sensitive to suburban residential district. Staff recommends to continue rezone 1710 and Comprehensive Plan Amendment 1709 to the April 23, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Item 11, Major Plan Unit Development Amendment 1801 for Deerfield Cabins LLC Dion as the agent to amend the existing plan unit development to allow the existing single-family residence on lot 43 to be used as a vacation home rental on the subject property. Staff recommends to continue Major Plan Unit Development Amendment 1801 to the May 14, 2018 Planning Commission meeting with two conditions. Item 12, layout plat 1803, Carrie and Sabrina Johnston, to combine three lots in order to create lot one of Johnston subdivision. Staff recommends to continue layout plat 1803 to the March 26, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. And item 13, Vacation of Easement 1705 for Carrie and Sabrina Johnston, to vacate a portion of the existing easement, a 16-foot wide private roadway located on the interior of lots 20, 21, and 22 of lot one of the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter. South recommends to continue the Vacation of Easement 1705 to the March 26, 2018 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, PJ. Would staff like to pull any items?
12 and 13 for updates.
12 and 13 for updates. Would anybody on the board like to pull any items off the consent agenda?
No.
Audience members, all those items that were just read, those are all consent agenda items. We're going to take one vote on all of them, so if there's one that you would like removed off of that consent agenda, please come forward and let us know. Seeing none, that leaves our consent agenda with items 3 through 18, and then 12 and 13 have been added to our regular agenda. So our consent agenda is 3 through 11. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 12.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Frank Waiseth, Planner Two. This is for item 12 and 13, layout plat and Vacation of Easement. It's pulled to update the applicants. Since the time of the writing of the original staff report, the applicants have joined the Homeowners Association for Custer Trails Road, which has an easement from the Forest Service Oops. for access to the road in the section for the private properties in Section 14. By joining the Homeowners Association, they now have legal access on the private road to their property. So that's why it's been pulled in, provided the conditions recommended to you this morning.
So this is just a new recommendations from staff?
Yeah, just an update on the recommendation since it wasn't available at the time of writing for the original staff report.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
Do we have any meeting issues, knowing that it was advertised to be continued? And I think what I'm understanding now is we're recommending approval. Is that correct?
Yes.
And has staff received any questions or comments regarding this item prior to the meeting?
No, I discussed this with a representative from the Custer Trails or Homeowners Association, which kind of controls the road and, as I mentioned, has the easement granted from the Forest Service. They were the only ones, only ones to my knowledge that had issue with the applicants using this road before they had access. Haven't had any other complaints or comments regarding this item.
Any further questions? Any questions from the audience? All right, I see none. PJ, do you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
It still does need to be continued as the way it was advertised. You're correct. We would eventually recommend approval with these conditions that were provided this morning.
So the current recommendation is to continue it. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's what you'd like to continue it, but with these?
Yeah.
All right. So recommend to continue.
Move to continue, 12 and 13.
Motion to continue.
Do you need a separate motion for each one? Or can we do them together?
Separate items. Okay. So there's a motion to continue item 12. Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign.
Move to continue, number 13.
Item 13 is move to continue.
Second.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 14.
Item 14 is minor plat 1802 to reconfigure lot lines in order to create tracks 30 revised to, track 32 revised to, and track 40 revised to Rushmore Ranch Estates. The applicants are Tom and Ann Slaughter, surveyor and engineer John Arlith, and all are in the audience today if you have any questions. This was before you as a layout plat some time ago. They're consolidating, looking to consolidate these four lots into three lots. Three of the four lots have single-family residents on them, garages, approved access points. The one lot in the middle to the west of the section line is actually being absorbed with the two lots that are on either side of it, east and west, so they're kind of taking almost half of each of that. Recently, and on March 6, the Board of Commissioners vacated portions of the section line outlined here in red. Whoops, this is way off here. Kind of finagle a little bit right here. There was a garage that was built within the 33-foot on the east side of the section line. Part of the reason for the vacation was to fix that problem, but also it was listed as a 66-foot wide access point to the United States Forest Service. Forest Service has no documentation on an approved access at that point, and actually access is taken off of the 20-foot access and water line easement further to the west that goes up towards that water tank lot. Forest Service has no, had no objections to the vacation of the easement and hasn't stated any objection to the layout plat or the minor plat at this time. Couple of other items that came back for the request for comment was from equalization and registered deeds. That's some of the title information was missing, the township and range, but that has since, from the latest copy of the plat that we got, has been included. The United States Forest Service, this was originally before the conversations that we had with Rodney Brown, our contact. He wanted to see the documentation that gave them the access through that 66-foot wide access easement, and has since agreed that he's okay if it comes off of their plat, since they don't, since Forest Service doesn't recognize it anyway. It's more of the private landowner's responsibility and concern. So they may actually choose to take it off the plat since it was created with the plat and registered deeds had stated that they don't have any objection to that at this time. The applicant's request would decrease density in the Rushmore Ranch State subdivision, and staff would recommend approval of minor plat 1802 with 12 conditions.
Thank you very much, PJ. Any questions for staff? All right, any questions from the audience? Any public like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Current recommendation, staff recommends approval of minor plat 1802 with the following 12 conditions. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve minor plat 1802 with 12 conditions.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item 15.
Item 15 is layout plat 1801 and subdivision regulation variance 1801 to combine two lots to create lot 31 revised in block E of MS 1016, idolized mountain development, and to waive some planning requirements. The applicant is Idolized Mountain Lodge, and the surveyor and agent is Fiscal Land Surveying, and there is a representative from Fiscal Land Surveying in the audience today if you have any questions. The applicant's Idolized Mountain Lodging has requested to consolidate existing lot 31 and 32 in block E into lot 31 revised of block E and idolized mountain development. The consolidation will decrease density and idolize by one lot and create a lot that will be approximately 1.37 acres in size. Currently, the property, each individual property is not over one acre. Lot 31, which is the lot to the southeast, is .84 acres, currently zoned suburban residential district, and that is the current and future land use. There is an existing cabin on the property that was built in 1996 through a building permit. There was a residential addition, a deck, in 2013. The cabin used to have a valid conditional use permit for a vacation home that was granted in 2012. In 2016, the conditional use permit, which is 1223, was ended on October 10, 2016 with the applicant's concurrence. There was a lot size variance request in 2017, and the applicant was looking to allow a vacation rental on a lot less than one acre. As you know, Section 319 now has that requirement of a minimum of one acre where you have to get a lot size variance. That request was denied by the Board of Commissioners. This entire, the entire subdivision was planted in 1975 via plat book 14, page 15, and one of the unusual things about idolizes and especially these two lots is instead of the eight-foot minor drainage utility easements, these have 10-foot, which is why you'll see the wording in the recommendations that a minimum of eight feet be required. So if they want to go bigger than that, we don't have a problem with that. The other lot to the northwest, lot 32, is .56 acres, also suburban residential district, current and future zoning, and is vacant of any structures, and also planted in 1975 with a 10-foot wide minor drainage utility easement. The applicants are looking to waive subdivision regulation variance for any additional road improvements and design standards for SRD zoning for Munich Lane and Heidelberg Lane per Section 500.5 of the Pennington County Subdivision Regulation, including turnarounds and dead-end road systems. Staff does not object to the request for the waivers as submitted as residence is already existing and the density is being decreased on the roadway. Staff would note, however, that future subdivisions and existing lots in the entire subdivision may be, may be subject to Pennington County subdivision regulations, mainly because we're looking at a dead-end road system, again, planted in 1975 that is over the two-mile limit for the 40-unit rule, and also has well over 40 units. I think we're up into the 70s now. The last residence that we can find that was planted or that was allowed in this residence was early 2013. Haven't been any new residents in this area since then that we're aware of. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. Registered DGA just mentioned that on one of the drawings, lot 31 and 32 are on the wrong lots, so that's a, that's a quick fix. And the owner's certificate needs a notary acknowledgement for a corporation, not for an individual. And as far as analysis, the applicant's request, again, would decrease density of idolized mountain development by one lot. This part of idolized mountain development was planted in 1975 and is part of a larger dead-end road system. With all that, staff would recommend approval of layout plat 1801 with 10 conditions, and there will be a separate motion for the subregs.
All right. Separate motion. Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
PJ, are there any vacant lots?
Yes, there are.
So on these two particular dead-end roads, are there vacant lot?
I believe it's a couple, yes.
That will be developed?
I don't know if they will be.
But that's when we would expect to require the turnaround and the egress?
Somebody's looking to subdivide.
So why not do it now? Just curious.
We felt the, I felt the applicant was decreasing density, making the situation not as big of a problem, and it was planted back in 1975. They're not looking to put a unit on there.
Okay.
And so, and what this applicant would have to do is create an entirely new ingress and egress.
Not just do the turnaround?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
PJ.
Sir.
Is there any possibility this is going to wind up running us into the same problem we had with the Bransky Road developments?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions? Any audience member like to speak on this item? Seeing none.
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Go ahead, Rich.
It looks to me that back in the day, this Bavarian Drive was planted to the northwest. Is that just a dead-end road? Does it not go anywhere? It looks like at one time it was maybe planned to connect.
Which one?
Bavarian Drive.
Which one you're looking at? I'm sorry.
Keep scrolling through your handouts. There.
Oh, here?
Nope.
Up one.
It's up one, yeah.
Up, left, left.
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 Down.
Down.
Right, left.
Right there.
Bavarian.
From everything that we can tell, everything just stops. There was no.
It doesn't seem like any plan for, we haven't looked on that side of the subdivision that closely at that road. So couldn't find some additional information on that one, but it's just a dead-end road system, again, the same as what Commissioner DeSanto had brought up, the Bransky Road issue. These aren't the only two, and it's not the main concern with this one. I just put that in there as a point of fact.
But this helps eliminate some of the issues we, I mean, this is reducing density as opposed to Kaski out there. It's not.
It is, and that seems to be the trend, at least in idolizes for the last year and a half. Since the one-acre rule in Section 319 for vacation home rentals were put in, a lot of lots in idolizes have been consolidated to meet that one-acre minimum, and since then, those lots have requested a conditional use permit for vacation homes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Lori.
Do you know how many homes in idolizes are vacation homes, just roughly?
I think we have a rough number.
Is it?
Forty.
Like, more than half?
Yes.
Because you said there's 70 somewhere.
Seventy six. I have it right here.
Okay, so more than half are vacation homes.
Seventy-five address points, so that would be our residential. So there's 123 tax parcels, so you're looking at a little less than 50 vacant lots.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
And Mark.
Question from Michelle. Michelle. Since this causes a possible necessity of adding egress and ingress, is it possible that this is going to open us up to further litigation if somebody decides they want to build out there another home, and then we have to tell them that we're over the 40-unit rule? And basically, like I said, the same thing we're going on with Bransky Road.
Michelle Hoffman.
We wind up in that same argument.
Michelle Hoffman, State Attorney's Office. I do not believe so, because as PJ, Mr. Conover noted, they're actually not seeking a building permit, and they're simply seeking to consolidate these two lots, which would in fact decrease the density.
I understand that, but I'm talking that, does this, does this particular applicant, are they going to be the cause of having to create means of ingress and egress, or no, they're not? In other words, if we deny this, any future building's still going to need a second egress and ingress, right?
A building?
If, if, if in the future, there's other places that are planted for building out there. Am I correct?
What was, what was that question again?
There's other lots that are planted currently that are not built on.
Correct.
And therefore, but this particular approval is not going to make it so that it's not, in other words, if we didn't approve this, future building permits that are going to get issued out there are going to have to, would have to create a second egress and ingress anyway, correct?
All these have been planted, yeah.
These have already been planted, so that issue, the issue that you're referencing in terms of Bransky Street Road exists whether you consolidate these two lots or not. And furthermore, if you don't consolidate, then arguably you'll have two people coming in and seeking to build on, is it 31 and 32?
Yes.
You could have applicant to build on 31 and applicant to build on 32.
Okay.
Really, but in this case, by consolidating, you're most likely going to have a single lot.
That answers my question. I was just looking at whether or not we're opening ourselves up to further liability. So, thank you.
As a footnote, the reason that was put in there is because of what has happened recently with the Bransky Road issue. The, this development and the stuff off of Bransky are not the only two in the county.
Oh, yeah.
And I think there needs to be future, maybe discussion at the board level of what the board wants to do when building permit applications do come in. If a building permit comes in for one of the vacant lots in idolizes, it will be before the board again.
Gotcha.
But, and staff still recommends approval of layout plat with 10 conditions.
Thank you, PJ. There's a young lady who'd like to speak behind you there.
Okay. Good morning. My name is Janelle Fink. I'm with Fiscal Land Surveying. We're the agents on behalf of the McHaleys or Idolized Mountain Development. And I just wanted to offer a comment that there have been several plats recently. We actually did two with, within last year where they were consolidating lots and decreasing density, and both of those were approved without any regard, you know, concern, I guess, or note of the dead-end road system. And it's possible that it should have been noted at that time, but is, historically, we've seen that when you're decreasing density, that that's been seen as a positive step. And the residences that are out there do not trigger when you come in for a building permit on an existing planted lot. That does not trigger your subdivision.
Correct.
Regulation variance. So any of those existing planted lots, somebody comes in, applies for a permit, they receive that permit, and it doesn't come to this body, and it doesn't trigger that 40-unit rule on existing planning. They're grandfathered in.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, any further questions from staff?
Yep.
Move for approval.
Any further individuals from the audience that would like to come speak? Seeing none, the current recommendation is to approve. I think I did hear someone starting.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, is that for SV 1801 or is that for PL 1801? They have to be separate, correct?
They do have to be separate. Mark, the one that I was recommending for the layout plat 1801, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Does that clarify, Rich?
Yeah, but do we have to do the variance first?
No, there's conditions in the, in there that reference the variance.
All right.
Sorry.
Okay. So it's just one. We don't have to do two separates on this one then?
Two separate, one for the plat, one for the subregs.
Gotcha. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then for the subregs?
And staff would recommend approval of subdivision regulation variance 1801.
And I'll move approval of that recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
That takes us to 16, item number 16.
Good morning. Brittany Moll, Environmental Planning Supervisor. Item 16 is a conditional use permit request, 1801, to allow for a temporary, to allow a temporary permit for retail sales of Class C fireworks. That currently, as it stands now, this lot is zoned general commercial. It consists of .83 acres. It is provided with public water and sewer through Rapid Valley Sanitary District. There was a conditional use permit prior to this in 1984 that allowed for a storage facility on the property. That since use is not used anymore, currently it's being used as a used car sales. There are various structures on that property for the use of used car sales. This was routed through the interdepartmental review, and there was no major items of concerns that came back. The biggest one was from our Highway Department that did, wanted to make clear that there was no parking allowed in the right-of-way along Jolly Lane and School Drive. There are considerations for a conditional use permit. The first one is effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the uses already permitted, and upon property values within the immediate vicinity. The proposed conditional use for the temporary sale of fireworks in existing buildings should not have significant effect upon the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity, as there are other commercial uses across the street, front lawn, School Drive, off of Highway 44. The effect upon the normal and orderly development improvement of surrounding vacant property, considering the surrounding land uses have several commercial businesses currently operating daily, the temporary fireworks sales should have little effect on the development or improvement of the surrounding properties. Net utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. All necessary public utilities exist on the property, and due to the temporary use, or due to the temporary use nature of fireworks sales in existing building, no additional utility should be necessary, and that the off-street parking and loading requirements are met. It appears that the area around the commercial building is already gravelled and is leveled to provide parking, and measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting. The proposed conditional use does have potential to produce odor, dust, and noise. All of these could potentially be offensive to the surrounding property owners, considering the surrounding land uses. It is unlikely that the temporary fireworks sales will adversely affect the surrounding landowners. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 1801 with 11 conditions. And just one to note is that condition 11 is that it would be reviewed at the May 14, 2018 Planning Commission meeting, as the applicant has not applied for licenses with the state yet, as he wanted to ensure that the conditional use permit would be approved first, or any concerns from the Planning Commission be addressed.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Lori.
We don't have a legend on this map.
Oh.
The pink is, the pink's general commercial. What's the light yellow? I'm assuming the orange is suburban residential.
The light yellow is city limits. It's Rapid City city limits.
So anything that's yellow is inside the city limits?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Brittany, was there any concern from the fire safety on this? Because right across the street, basically, we've got large-scale fireworks going off during that season at the, at the racetrack, and quite often, pieces of burning material land on the ground. And quite often, pieces of burning material land on the ground when those fireworks go off. And then to have a tent right across the street full of more fireworks, any concern from Fire Department?
I did not receive any comments, however, as part of the licensing requirements through the state, they do have to have the fire marshal do the inspection to receive that license.
Okay.
So, I'm none.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Ron Wyffenbach from, I live in Rapid at forty-one fifty-three Augusta Drive. I'm here to answer any questions. And we've went extensively through the stipulations that are there. We have no problem meeting them. Most of the cars will be removed from the area. It's a slow time of year for a car season. The peak season for cars is right now. It's winding down, so there'll be very few cars. We'll have, obviously, we want to be good neighbors and it behooves us to, to make sure the traffic flows through there correctly anyway, to be able to allow people to shop freely and come and go freely, so we'll be onsite to handle that. And then any of the concerns, actually, this is a metal building that these fireworks will be in. So it's the big, large metal building that's in the metal, so it's not like a tent. So, I mean, I've seen the tents and we're not going to have that issue if something did fall down and hit the building, it would, it would just roll off the building. So, yeah, we've tried to address everything and I'm here to, you know, address any questions that you guys have and reassure you that, you know, we've improved the property over the years. I was the previous owner of the property and the property owner that has it now, neither one of us ever received any complaints on anything that we've ever done there. And that it, it used to be a storage facility slash car lot and now it's just a car lot. All the storage units removed out. So that's really about it. And we will have a porta potty onsite because I just think that's be good, you know, try to keep it conspicuous. And it's only going to be for the period of time that allows that, that to happen. And then the reason I don't have the, the state permit is because I didn't, I wanted to make sure that you guys were good with everything before I went and spent five hundred dollars for a, a state permit. So we'll bring that back at that time and allow you guys to review it.
All right. Any questions for Ron?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
You haven't, you haven't received any concern from the neighborhood on School Drive as far as traffic and that kind of stuff?
Absolutely nothing. Zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
And you will remove the cars? I'm looking at the picture here and then you're playing-
Yeah, if you, if you look now, if you look at the Google map, you'll see that the Google map pictures, there's a lot less there. And this morning, there's a lot less than that even. So most entirely, most of them will be gone. Not entirely, there'll be some on the sides, but not in the front. Everything will be cleared out of there, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Lori.
Do you guys sell fireworks during New Year's or just during Fourth of July?
Just during Fourth of July. I was told tonight that there's a possibility that there's a small window in December, but if we did something like that, we would come back and amend that with you guys.
Okay.
So, but it's just a small window. I think it's like the twenty-seventh through the fourth or, the numbers are in there. I'm not exactly sure.
Thanks.
Yes, Kathy.
Chairman, yep. What about signage? What do you intend to do for signs?
We haven't approached that yet. Anything we do for signage has to come back to you guys to get sign permits. So I'm assuming we'll have a, a large sign that says what we're doing and probably attach it over the top of the signs that are there, but we would have to get those all permitted, anything we did with a sign. So that would be a whole separate issue. So, and, and then again, they would be just for that window of-
Yeah.
-that timeframe, that's it. So, nothing for a minute.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, the recommendation is recommend approval of conditional use permit CU eighteen oh one with the following eleven conditions. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item seventeen.
Item seventeen is an ordinance amendment to amend Section two oh four J three P requirements for onsite wastewater treatment systems. The reason for this proposed ordinance amendment is because the National Environmental Health Association no longer provides certification for onsite wastewater treatment installers, so we felt that we needed to remove it from our ordinance if they don't allow that. I do have a couple. There are some other wordsmithing in the proposed text that I'd like to propose, if that's okay. If there's any other questions.
Any questions for Brittany at this point?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a point of curiosity, the, the eight-hour installer education course that is still required, who provides that?
We do. All the county staff puts it together and then the installers pay for it and attend it. We have trainers come in typically from University of Minnesota.
I didn't put you in that.
Typically, we have trainers come in from University of Minnesota.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Brittany, so all this in red is what you wrote in just to kind of cover what was deleted? Is that correct?
Correct. Correct. And then there is a couple wordsmithing under the proposed text on page two on II. Instead of saying has received certification, is certified by, just so all the tenses stay the same in those lines.
Okay.
Recommending that. And then on number four here, it'd be attends, so add an S to attend. And then completes approved, so add the word approved, continuing education credits. And then again, under certification renewal, under II, complete approved continuing education credits.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Lori.
Brittany, so people can, can get their certification in other places in other states and they, they could just bring their certificate to you and show that they've, they have the proper credentials?
If they take other courses, I know Minnesota and Colorado both have pretty extensive courses that they could take. That's why we had changed it to the planning director because we're aware, even our staff has attended some of those, so those are ones that we would typically recommend for approval.
And that particular training, is it good for a certain period of time and then they have to go to refresher? Is it good for forever or how, how does that work?
This would be for every two years, so they'd take eight hours every two years. I know some state certifications are different, but we allow them to do those in other states or in Colorado or Minnesota if they want to.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Any audience members like to address item seventeen?
Hello. My name is Tina Malali. I'm from Rapid Valley. I do have a question about the ordinance amendment. Can you tell me how many times this was advertised for this ordinance amendment?
Yes, three weeks.
Three weeks. And can you show me in the ordinance on, I could only find in the ordinance that it's only required for ordinance amendments to be advertised one time. Can you show me the statute on that?
Yeah, it's followed under the, any, in our zoning ordinance, there is language where ordinance amendments rezones and stuff follow like state statutes where it's once for Planning Commission in two weeks and a row for Board Commissioners. So it's three weeks before it even gets to the Planning Commission.
So one time, three weeks before the Planning Commission meeting?
No. Once for, there's language for Planning Commission.
Right.
Once for Planning Commission and then two weeks in a row after that for County Board. It's, so it's three weeks in a row before it even gets to the Planning Commission meeting.
Gotcha.
So you advertise for the planning-
Planning Commission and-
Commission for a week?
No. It's, it's advertised for both Planning Commission and County Board, three weeks in a row before it goes to Planning Commission and County Board.
Because that's kind of confusing to me. I'm like, it's only one time for, I mean, why would it have to be advertised for the County Commissioners' meeting if it hasn't been even brought to, to the Planning Board?
Because it has to follow it, even though if they may continue it here, it'll still go on the County Board agenda as a first reading, come back to, to come back to the Planning Commission and County Board.
And can you cite me that ordinance where I can read it myself?
I'd have to, after the meeting, I can show you the, in the zoning ordinance and some, there are state statutes under rezones.
Any further questions? Okay, current recommendation is, Brittany, do you have something else or?
Nope.
I just didn't want to jump there. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance amendment OA eighteen oh one.
And I'll move approval of that recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item eighteen.
Item, or, excuse me, item eighteen kind of follows the same recommendations due to Nihah no longer providing certifications. It's to amend Section two oh four J three P service providers O and M onsite wastewater treatment systems. And so we're just asking that they remove that requirement to pass any Nihah dance certified test because it's no longer available for them to take. And there is a couple wordsmithing things in here too. On the first paragraph under proposed text, comma after experimental, and remove the comma after unconventional.
Any further, any questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Rich.
In reading this and reading the, the recommended text here, my question is, what happens if we have one of these experimental systems and an O and M service provider installs it and then that company goes out of business? Who is, who's okay then to service it?
Well, right now, we haven't had that happen. They do have to be maintenance per manufacturer's specification, so I think even if it's installed, those specifications would still stand over time. There's one or two companies that do a majority of the servicing on them and it would depend, you know, most of them are an aeration type unit. There's a few that have like cartridges, like filter cartridges, but most of them, the people that have been trained to do them have done them consistently since I've been here for the most part.
I guess I'm just wondering on the requirements if you should leave yourself, you know, or, or approved something, something by, you know, staff in case, because it looks to me like there's only one requirement then, right? Be a certified service provider by the manufacturer of the equipment to be serviced or maintained. And if that's no longer available, then you guys would be approving whether or not they could maintain it? Am I understanding that correctly?
Or nobody would be able to maintain it if you read it.
That's my concern.
Literally, sure.
So I, I just think there should be a, an II there and I think that you guys could come up with a phrase there to say or, you know, recommended maintenance approved by staff. And then they have to then be one of these, they, they have to have gone through what we, what we passed in item seventeen, the continuing education or something. Those are my comments, anyway.
Okay.
Two eighteen.
Any further questions?
Trying to think of a-
I don't know if Michelle's-
Yeah, she's writing.
Ads, oh, she can write right now.
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Lori.
Just for curiosity, like, how many units in the county do we have that fall under this criteria? Just a few?
No, we have one whole subdivision. It's just ATU units, Canyon Springs.
They're what kind of units?
ATU units, so the advanced treatment units.
Okay.
So Canyon Springs, that whole subdivision-
That's off Nemo Road?
Correct. And that was put in as part of their planned unit development. It was part of their community drain field system and things that they had engineered and designed. And then there's a few others. There's one, some in Silver City, there's some along Shoredin Lake Road.
Okay.
So Michelle's, a service provider approved by the planning director or his or her designee? For now.
Does that mean what you're looking for?
And or after maintained?
Yeah. Okay. So, current recommendation, recommendation is to approve the ordinance amendment OA eighteen oh two. We're going to add that. What is it going to be? Is it going to-
II.
II.
And then an or after, comma or after maintained?
Okay. Can you read that so we all have that and, again?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, Michelle, you took off with it. Boom. A service provider approved by the planning director or his or her designee.
Any further questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
So moved with the updates as stated.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Takes us to item nineteen, County Board Report.
PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department, County Board Report. First item is the two thousand and eighteen February building permit report. Single-family homes are down fourteen percent over this time last year. However, we're looking at garages and carports up thirty-three percent.
We're on nineteen.
I'm sorry?
You're on twenty-one, aren't you? We're on nineteen, sorry.
Oh, okay, nineteen. Let's go back a little bit.
County Board Report, right? Not bad, sorry.
What, what were you reading? I totally just was-
It's all right.
He was reading after this. That's why I was like, wait.
I was like, I was getting my papers all set and I'm like, wait a minute.
Thank you, Lori.
Sorry.
No problem. All right, nineteen, County Board Report. The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendation from the February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen Planning Commission meeting. As far as ordinance amendment seventeen oh two, the mining ordinance, the second reading of the mining ordinance was approved on February twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen.
All right. Any questions?
No.
All right. Item twenty, items from the public. I don't see anybody in here, so I guess we can go to item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one, item from staff, County Building Permit Report deja vu. All right. Single-family residences are down fourteen percent over this time last year. Garages and carports are up thirty-three percent and residential additions like finished basements and extra rooms are down thirty-three percent. If you'll notice, number two fourteen CO, with CO standing for county, the other transient shelters, that's the, under canvas, that's just some of the tents that, that were approved on their, their conditional use permit. We have probably another seventy-plus from those that still have to get issued and have some septic things they have to work out before they're issued. So that's the conditional use permit for under canvas, the glamping.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So those, those are being installed now?
No, they're not installed yet. Those are just some of the permits that were allowed.
Oh, for the site, so they have to, I, I forget the conditions of that permit. Do they have to permit each individual structure?
Correct.
Okay. And some have septic and some don't? They have septic-
They all have.
I forget.
They're all, they're, yes and no.
Okay.
It's hard to say, there's, there's, there's eighty tents, eighty-one TP's not in a, not including the laundry, the kitchen, the dining hall.
Oh, that's right, because there's some central facilities.
Yes, there's almost a hundred buildings.
So I was curious, excuse me.
Go ahead Kathy.
Yeah, I was kind of curious about these too, so, and I don't have the background, but what, what is this little tent city? Excuse me?
The glamping, what this was? I can go back to the conditional use permit, if you want me to pull it up, I can try and find it.
No, just give me a little.
It's basically designer camping, it's glamorous camping.
Glamorous camping.
Uh, this company under canvas, most of their sites are in national parks, so basically take a five-star hotel bedroom, usually with the antiques, and put it into a specially-made designed tent.
And, and where is this address located, this?
Southeast of Keystone.
Southeast of Keystone, okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any further questions, comments? Alright, the comprehensive plan update?
Sure. Matrix Design Group will be here on the week of March nineteenth. We have a meeting in the evening on March twentieth at six o'clock in Hill City at the High School Theater, one at the City of Wall, at the Wall Community Center at six and also on Thursday the twenty-second in Rapid City at the Black Hills State University Rapid City Campus. Also, if you remember, the morning of March twentieth is a Board of Commissioners meeting where Matrix will be here to present some of the findings that they've had so far and also if you have received the emails from the existing conditions report, basically it allows the planning commission and the board and the public know where we are as a county before now we're gonna start changing things, so you kind of need that base of understanding before you move forward, so. That's it for that and I believe that the, the planning commission had also voted to have a quorum at the meeting on the twentieth so we can advertise properly, so we're not in violation of any open meeting laws.
Who's gonna be there? I know I'm gonna be there. Me, Laurie.
I intend to be there.
I intend to be there. Sonny, you'll be there?
I will be gone.
You'll be gone. Do we know if Bill's planning on showing up too or?
That one I don't know, Mike can find out for you though.
Okay, just so we know who all's gonna be there.
Not knowing how that agenda's gonna play out, they're looking at a forty-five minute to an hour presentation slash Q and A. They're gonna try, staff's gonna try and get it earlier on the agenda, but it, it really depends on what items are on the agenda that day, so it'll be up to the commission's, the commissioner's office to determine that.
Mark DeSanto, you're on over there.
That meeting starts at nine o'clock on the twentieth. Item C, mining committee, actually kind of covered that already with the county board report. Item D, special animal keeping regulations committee, it's still meeting regularly, pretty much every other Monday. Right now, they're working on intent and purpose of, of the committee to kind of narrow down hopefully. The conversation is very broad right now and so Travis is looking for them to kind of narrow it down a little bit before we start moving forward. And I believe you put a deadline on the first draft?
We did, we put a deadline for the first draft three weeks out from our last meeting.
End of April, mid-April? You're looking to have your first.
With an option to adjust if we need be, but that way we can try to get focused and figure out what we, how we wanna move forward.
How many people are on your committee?
Nine?
Nine voting. Nine voting.
Nine voting, I'm the only, I would vote only if there's a tiebreaker, so.
And just incidentally, I appreciate the link on the webpage to, to that committee and, you know, because it lists the people there and the, the meetings and so on, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any committee, whenever we have a committee, we do something like that because we, it cuts down a lot of the phone calls and emails that we get, as long as we can keep it up to date, yeah, but thank you. Item E is the twenty-twenty census, this hasn't been brought up for some time, our office is the designated ones in the county to oversee the twenty-twenty census, so this started about a year ago. Frank, our GIS guy, he was up here earlier for one of the layout plaques and vacation of easements. We just got our documents in the mail the other day from their main office, so he and I, basically, he has to go through and personally verify all the addresses in the entire county and tell them where the discrepancies are in the information that they have and it's no small task, over forty thousand addresses, so he'll be pretty busy. We're just gonna let you guys know that we're working on that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead Laurie.
Do you guys actually, do you guys actually go out and do some of the survey stuff or you, you just do the background work for them to go ahead and do the census then? I forget.
Well, no, we're not the ones that go door to door.
Yeah, okay.
No, we're looking at GIS data and.
And then you forward that on to the census people, right?
Yeah, they, they sent us what they have from last time or with the most updated, then he'll run an algorithm to kind of compare and contrast and then come up with the differences and then prepare a report and send it back and there's a chain of custody on all the information, everything has to be locked up when you're not using it and only certain people can touch it because of the information that's in there, it's, it's only once every twenty years, we're okay with it. But City Rapids doing the same thing and so are the other incorporated cities, everybody's doing their part.
Thanks.
But nothing further.
Alright, item twenty-two, items from the membership, anybody have anything?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead Mark.
A concern was brought up to me by Ms. Malawi, I don't know if she worked it out with you or not PJ, but we, we continued without prejudice her application for the ordinance amendment. A continuance without prejudice, she wouldn't be charged again for that two-hundred-and-twenty dollar fee, from my understanding.
So the board.
To bring it back.
Yeah, so with the applicant's concurrence, it was, it was Tina Malawi had sent in an ordinance amendment for something with the septic, I can't remember exactly, I haven't spoken to Tina about what the contents of her new amendment is.
Okay.
I was out of the office when she came in on, on Friday and the staff that was able to take care of her doesn't make those decisions of whether to take an application in after denial without prejudice or not, because if it doesn't, if it's not the same or similar, then it's something new. And so then if it was something new, then all fees would be required, so it, again, I'd have to see actually what the application wording is. I met with Ms. Malawi, just had about, I know ten minutes while Brittany was up here talking to see if she wanted to go outside and speak and she said that she didn't have the time and she, well, she didn't say, she didn't have the time, she said she's gonna be here till the end of the meeting so we can just talk afterwards.
Okay.
So, I just, again, I haven't seen the application to be able to determine one way or the other, which way it's gonna go.